Okay. Welcome to the April seventeenth, twenty twenty. Whoops. Twenty, is it today, is the seventeenth?
Yes.
Sorry. Got too many dates on you. April seventeenth, twenty twenty. Board of Commissioners, special meeting. Please sign at cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers. Also, if you'd like to speak today, there are speaker requests on the back of the bookcases in the back, and then you can hand Miss Holly, who's usually to the left of our dais here. First, we'll have a moment of silent reflection, and then pledge allegiance led by Commissioner Ross Connect.
Father. Clark.
Whoops, nope. Pledge of allegiance.
I got him. I still have her. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great prayer.
Ron, did you have a prayer before we started?
Like, did you change that?
My moment of silence was the pledge of allegiance.
He was pledging for our father, is what he's just saying.
You notice how everybody come together towards the end, though? That's all that counts.
Item. Holly, we don't have to do a adopt plan here. We just, and we did that this morning. Okay. Items from emergency management first, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Dustin Willett, Emergency Management Director. So, the senior leadership brief should have went out to all of your emails a little bit ago, so that has the most current, up-to-date information that we've sourced through the Emergency Operations Center. We continue to work very hard right now on the temporary emergency homeless shelter. That's, we're getting close to some pretty significant milestones with that project, so that's what I was working on right before this, and that's what I'll be working on right after this. So, that's what staff is working on right now for the most part. I guess I'd be happy to stand for any specific questions you might have on what emergency management is doing in relation to the COVID-19 outbreak.
Do we have questions from the board?
Dustin, any major things that have changed, any different direction that you're going at this point in time compared to what you were maybe a week ago?
No, our objectives haven't changed, our direction hasn't changed. I think there is some measure of, I don't know if surprise is the right word. I don't think anybody expected West River's numbers to be as low and stay as low as they currently are, so that's, you know, everybody's, I think, collectively holding their breath. And the working assumption is that those numbers will rise at some point, but I don't think anybody, if you would have asked folks three weeks ago what our numbers would have been this week, I don't think anybody would have forecasted the low numbers that we're currently seeing. So, that has everybody, I won't say in a holding pattern, we're certainly moving forward, but I think that data point is unexpected. The other thing that I think, and this is larger, this is bigger and more geopolitical maybe, but due to those low numbers and the fact that there is a lot of press about what the numbers are doing on the coasts, we knew that they would quote-unquote "peak" before the Midwest. I mean, their numbers went up earlier, and now their numbers are, you know, potentially plateauing. And so, there's going to be a nationwide, maybe not a sigh of relief, but it's going to be interesting to combat the relaxation that may happen on the coasts at the time where we still need to be vigilant and we're still ramping up. And that's going to be an interesting dichotomy to manage in the general population because we are time-shifted away from what's happening on the coasts. And so, that's probably the dynamic that we're trying to pay attention to and trying to get a good beat on. And again, there's a lot of different stakeholders at play in that piece of it, but...
Dustin, can you give us information on the Care-19 app with the Apple and Android phones that they are tracking? Did you get any information on that, or is that just from the governor?
So, is there any specific information?
Well, so people know that you can log in where people have been on the Care-19 or...
Yep, so there's an application that you can download onto an Android or an Apple device, and that application anonymizes your data, so there's not a name attached to it, but it basically authorizes the state to collect your location data so that in the eventuality that you would have a positive test for the COVID-19 infection, and I'm not sure how this works with the front-end anonymized data, but at some point, you're able to authorize the state to do contact tracing based off of your location data. So, it's basically you authorizing the state access to your location data, and that's obviously an individual decision, but that app is available, and anyone can download it, anyone can sign up for it.
That way, if you had COVID-19, they could track where you've been, and that way, they can track the people that you have basically infected. And then the other area was some of the treatments from North Dakota, South Dakota that they're trying, I don't know if they, was it this weekend or last weekend or next or this coming weekend with treatments of a new hydro...
So, there's a clinical trial that was authorized through, I'm gonna say, was that a Barra or Sanford? Does anybody know off the top of their head?
Three different health care systems. That's what she said would be doing them.
I think, I'm only aware of one clinical trial that was being managed by Sanford, I believe, but I'll certainly follow up on that. But it's a clinical trial for some of the, well, I think specifically the anti-malaria or malaria drug, yep, that is going on. So, again, those trials are very regimented, very defined. It's not just a broad, anybody that has this, we're gonna treat. It's a pretty defined medical trial. But yes, that started, I mean, I think they were enrolling people, like you said, last week.
That's long-term. I think they said, you know, before they get complete results on that, it's like a five-year.
Yeah, multiple year, absolutely.
Madam Chair. Dustin, how do they differentiate between the flu, just the common flu and the virus? Is there a way they can do that?
So, empirically, the only way to differentiate between the two is by testing, you know, running a specific COVID-19 test or running a specific influenza A or influenza B test, depending on your symptomology and depending on where you're at. If you're an inpatient, if you have high-risk comorbidities, you very well might get those tests, but one of the issues that we're facing nationwide is, again, a shortage of some of the basic collection materials, swabs as a common item that you hear about in the media. The collection materials for a lot of those tests are similar, and so, we run into a shortage of the actual testing material for any of those tests. But I know that we continue to run influenza tests, and the information that I've received back is that we are getting a lot of influenza, influenza A, influenza B positive tests, and as the reporting bears out from the state website, very, very, very few COVID-19 positive tests. I think it's important to note that the tests that we do have available for COVID-19, the doctors in charge of those tests are administering them to patients that they think have the best chance of having COVID-19. So, we're administering these tests to the patients that are most likely to have it, and they're coming back negative. Almost all of them are coming back negative. So, that's an important data point. We're testing those we think have it, and they're coming back negative.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dustin?
Thanks, Dustin.
Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you, Dustin.
Next, we have John Morrell. You have three different areas. First, the excluded position list. Thank you, John.
Good afternoon, Commissioners John Morrell, Pennington County Human Resources. So, yes, we have three different items today to be reviewed. The first is the excluded positions list. I put them in order initially, and then they got shuffled on my desk, so...
Can I ask you one question? Are we voting on these today? Okay, thank you.
So, the first again is a position list, and this has been reviewed a few times and adjusted. The important piece to understand with this, well, actually, there's two pieces, is first of all, the positions that are on the excluded list are actually identified as being those that directly support either a healthcare function and/or our first responder functions throughout the county, whether it be indirect support or financial support, or even a bookkeeping type of aspect in order to maintain those operations. This is a list that may change from time to time, depending on how things change with regard to the virus. You may see some additions or subtractions to this list, and we'll be sure to keep you aware of that at the point that those would occur. People that are on this list also are not the people, excuse me, positions that are identified on this list are excluded from participating in the Emergency Paid Sick Leave and the Emergency Expanded Family Medical Leave Act. So, they would still be eligible for regular FMLA, but they would not be able to participate in those two programs under the Families First Coronavirus Response Act.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from department heads or the public on any of this? Okay. And Holly, we have to make a motion.
Madam Chair. I have a question.
Sir.
So, John, it's very obvious that, you know, a lot of these positions are exempt positions, but there are hourly positions that are included in here also.
That's correct, sir.
Any idea what the breakdown is on...
I do not have that information. Again, we've been adding or changing based upon updates from the departments as we are evaluating this. I would say that a large, the number of positions that are on here, I don't have, but I would say that a majority of the employees that would be impacted are most likely in the hourly ranks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Do we have a motion to accept this list?
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy.
Second.
Seconded by DeSanto. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Next, for proposed furlough policy.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next one, actually, and what I'm gonna do is give you a copy of an updated letter. I've been working with the state's attorney's office to actually make sure that this fits and works as best as possible for our employees. So, this would be the letter notice, or again, it's a template, so they need to be tailored for the department and/or employee. But this replaces the reduced work hour letter that's in your packet. This is the updated, and I'll explain what those updates are.
Okay, sir.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. So, this replaces?
This replaces the reduced hours template that you had in your packet initially. So, what I'll do first of all is speak to the possibility of furlough. We have actually, based upon current situations across the country, across the state of South Dakota, furloughs have become a reality for many businesses and entities, whether they be nonprofit or for-profit businesses. Earlier today, you may have seen that Monument Health announced a furlough of 200 employees. Also today, Avera Health in Sioux Falls announced furloughs of 650 with an additional 1,500 employees there that would be seeing reduced hours. We're not isolated from some of those things. This is simply a tool. It's not a recommendation, but it's a tool that's available for our departments to leverage in cases where they need to, if the financial pressures are such and/or the business drops. And in both cases of those health systems, it's been both of those two factors that have impacted their decisions.
And you sent this to all the department heads already?
This is something that we've reviewed over and over for the last several weeks, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, so the only difference now is the reduced hours letter, and I'll explain that. The difference with regard to the reduced hours has to do with section number five or four, and it's the top of the back of that page. And again, this is in partnership with the state's attorney's office, and they've been great to work with as we've gone through this. What you'll notice under item number four, initially, it's simply stated, you'll not be allowed to use any accrued vacation or sick time to supplement your earnings. What we've done, however, is recognize that if we have someone on a reduced hour schedule, they are potentially going to get sick or have other things happen that prevents them from working the agreed-upon schedule that we've just developed for them. What we're trying to do with this exception and with this change is to make sure if we have them on a 20-hour work week schedule and say they're sick for four hours, they could actually tap into the vacation or sick time to actually still get back to that 20-hour level. So, that was a great observation and a good recommendation, and I would present both of these letters again as templates, understanding that they have to be tailored for the individual positions as well as the employees within the departments.
Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
You know, the furloughing that is going on in our community and across our states is something that's tough for every employer to do because they value their employees very much, and they have to. You know, they're looking at reductions, same as the county has or any other one. You know, what does help is the CARE Act for unemployment benefits that comes with this. I can guarantee you, everybody in this room, that if it wasn't for that CARES Act, we'd have a lot different discussions than we are right now because, you know, that helps ease it in, and with the furloughing, I've heard employers say, you know, at least I can bring them back when I need to, but at least I know we're doing what we have to do to survive, and there's something that's gonna help our employees, that's gonna keep them available to us when we pick back up and move forward, and I think that helps ease the burden greatly. But I just express wholeheartedly to not only Pennington County, but all the employees in Rapid City and South Dakota that, you know, this is something that's necessary and that if it wasn't for that CARES Act, we'd be in a lot tougher position, and we value and we want you back.
I would agree, sir. Thank you for that. So, if not everyone is familiar with the CARES Act, what it does is provide additional unemployment benefits for people that are on a furlough, any type of a reduction in hours, as long as they qualify, minimally qualify for state unemployment benefits, they automatically apply or are eligible for, excuse me, the additional CARES Act funding from the federal government. The South Dakota Unemployment Fund is based upon our insurance, and I think Commissioner DeSanto, you spoke about that last week. The CARES Act money is a federal-funded program, but it provides an additional $600 per week to anyone that, again, minimally meets the unemployment benefits levels within the state. So, while the maximum payment, if you're fully furloughed and eligible for unemployment here, the maximum payment from the state is $414 a week. The CARES Act actually provides an additional $600 a week on top of that $414, and that's available to that person when they're out, all the way through the end of July. That program ends on July 31st, so we'll have to keep that in mind. But anyone furloughed moving forward, if they're eligible for unemployment through the state program, they're automatically available or eligible for the CARES Act money as well.
Sir?
Madam Chair, Mark Vargo, Pennington County State's Attorney. John just misspoke. It's the 25th that that program ends, not the 31st, so we just need to keep those dates in mind.
Okay. The document I just read today wasn't 31st.
I've been working with them, and they told us 25th.
Can you tell us how you're doing your furlough program? I think the other commissioners don't know exactly what you're doing, and I thought it was a great idea yesterday.
Thank you, you bet. So, what we did was we reverse-engineered the unemployment process. So, depending on the hourly wage that an employee makes, there's a maximum number of hours that they can work and be eligible for state unemployment benefits. So, if you have somebody that makes $100,000 a year and they're on a 25% furlough, they're still not eligible for unemployment, right? So, we had to figure out for our employees, how much do we have to furlough them to get them below that threshold to be eligible for state unemployment benefits? Once they're eligible for state unemployment benefits, the entirety of the CARE Act benefits kick in. And so, what we did for each of our employees, and I brought in a highly respected expert from Los Angeles to, out of my basement and into my living room, to figure out the spreadsheet for me, but what it does is it tells us if we have to pay, if we have to furlough you, say, to 26 hours a week, then that makes sure you're eligible for the state benefits, then we add in the federal care benefits, we add that to the money you're still making and the 24 hours a week that you are working, and we come up with a total number. And so, for most of the people that we're looking at furloughing, my goal was obviously to keep as many people working as many hours as possible, because while the county wants to save money, my office still has to run. If we furloughed everybody 30 hours a week or 20 hours a week, we just wouldn't get our jobs done. And the sheriff is still bringing his people, the police department's still bringing his people, the courts are still insisting that we deal with things. So, we have obligations that we can't get away from. So, what we figured out was a mechanism where there are a few people at the highest end of our pay scale on hourly employees, and by the way, we can only do this for hourly employees. Exempt employees would have to be furloughed a week at a time, and so this whole process would fall apart. It doesn't work for them. So, what we would have to do, or what we did, was we figured out how to maximize the amount of work that they can still do for the county, still receive those benefits, and as I said, I think of the 21 people that we have on that list, 19 of them will actually make more money under this program because of that $600 flat. That's not, as we understand it, and John's been saying this from the beginning, and everybody we've talked to has agreed, but it's also brand-new, so we have to, we may have to readjust if that turns out not to be true. But what we are told is that that is a flat thing. Once you're eligible, you get the whole package. If that is true, 19 of those 21 will actually be making more money in less time, and two will be taking $10 a week in pay cuts. So, less, but not significantly so.
Thank you.
So, that's the way that I felt, and obviously, that has consequences to our operation. Most of those people are being furloughed between 14 and 21 hours, so we're getting between 19 and 26 hours of work out of them. That's a pretty significant hit to our ability to get things out the door, so we're gonna have to adjust to that. I mentioned to the commission when we spoke earlier this morning about that, that may have to adjust, we're going to have to adjust how we approach certain cases in order to realize that being able to make that staff be able to function fully, some cases are going to be dealt with differently than they would have been otherwise. But it means that the fiscal consequences to the employees are not what I was worried that they would be.
So, you also...
When I decided that it was at least something we had to explore.
So, with furloughs, if that becomes the case, you also can bring people back, right? If you need them?
We can.
Okay.
But understanding that this program only runs till the 25th, or if they change it to the 31st, the bottom line is if it runs longer...
Right.
Then we have more options. The problem now is if I needed them desperately next week, and I bring them back, or some portion of them back, I can't make those hours up in August and furlough some people in August because that federal benefit is gone, and I don't want to send somebody home who's averaging, let's say, you know, we've got legal secretaries making and the 800-some dollars a week. Well, if they're capped at $414 in the state benefits and the federal benefit wasn't there, I don't know very many people that could survive on that kind of a pay cut involuntarily. So, that's why we're doing it now, even if we have to kind of bite the bullet and do some things we don't really want to do.
Thank you, Mr. Vargo.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Drews, our Commissioner.
I just appreciate the way you worked with your office and working that out with the numbers and being able to get, still come in and work and make it all work, because, you know, we all know that for myself and any employee, the self-worth comes from working and being able to pull our own weight, and what you did is working with those numbers is kind of accomplished all that goals, I think.
Thank you, Commissioner. I will tell you, exactly that thing, though, came up. We originally looked at full furloughs for a lesser number of people, so roughly the same number of hours, but using completely furloughing people, and that was not well-received because people feel like they have a mission, they believe in the work that they do, and they want to continue it. And so, I'm really proud of, honestly, the fact that they didn't really want to do it that way. And they forced me and forced us to look at a better way to do it. I think this is a better way to do it, and it keeps them connected to the office in a way that wouldn't be otherwise. And then, because we are large enough and because we run into problems at 10 weeks, right now, the rules say that at 10 weeks, you have to start looking for work. I don't want any of my people looking for work because I want them back. And so, that might get extended, but it might not. So, what we did is we took the next 14 weeks, and half of the people will be on reduced hour furlough the first seven weeks, while the others work full-time, and then we're flipping it, and the second half takes over in the second half of that period. So, that's why that seven and seven, we're doing it in two shifts, which again, means that we don't have as big a hit to our ability to get the work done, but we spread the, we spread the time out of the office evenly.
President Love.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
I'd just like to make one point for Mark and for the public. This, the way Mark's doing this also is much better for the mental health of our employees, and I wish we could see more of this throughout the state, throughout the country, because just letting people go is putting a tremendous impact on their mental health, but being able to at least come to work for 27 hours a week is huge. It's huge. I mean, it'll save lives, it really will.
That's that sense of purpose, and I'm very proud of how our employees approached that. I was talking to somebody in my office who used to run Nash Finch for the entire region, you know, North Dakota, South Dakota, parts of Iowa, and he said it's always even more difficult when you run into a situation where the mission is really just as much money as you can create. If you have a higher mission, it's easier to get through this stuff, and my folks have really made that obvious to me, so...
Madam Chair. I kind of compare Mark's statement. It's like when you shut a business down completely, it's hard to open it back up, and there is some mental health associated to that, so that's why I favor use some common sense, keep the doors open, but don't completely shut them. The second question, John, is what factors contribute to when this is gonna end, when a furlough will end, and who's gonna be furloughed?
Yes, so, great questions. There's not answers for parts of that. Actually, even our local Department of Labor has referred me back to the U.S. Department of Labor on some of the questions. So, and that's to be expected. This is all new. We're all learning at the same time as they work through this. So, with regard to when these programs may end, we have dates, target dates, if you will, as of right now. Those are subject to change at pretty much any moment. We get updates at least daily, sometimes multiple times a day with regard to what's available or a new process. There's one this morning that came through from our Public Assurance Group that I'm not sure I'm clear on just yet, and I'm looking for more information. Another one that we're not certain of has to do with people that are on a partial furlough and their eligibility for the Emergency Paid Sick Leave or the Family Medical Leave Act under the expanded provisions. The way everything is written, it excludes anybody that's on a furlough, but if they're not fully furloughed, in my mind, again, they're still eligible. That's the part that the Department of Labor is still trying to iron out. They don't have answers for some of these questions that we're asking. With regard to funding, again, it's based on whatever Congress decides to do. I think we'll continue to see changes there. I get a daily email from one of our governmental organizations that encourages me and others to send our comments to the federal government about extending reimbursements to public-sector employers like ourselves. So, I do that frequently. I think the more, the better, writing letters to your congressmen, to your senators, those types of things, to help them understand that we feel some of those same pressures and pains that other employers... them understand that we feel some of those same pressures and pains that other employers do as well. I don't know that I answered your questions there, Commissioner. What else did you have that I missed?
Well, if this hypothetically, if the virus just went away, would we still do the furlough?
No, we wouldn't have a need to, actually. So I think that our business model is such that we're not gonna see a tremendous downturn in the need for our services. I think that's pretty much a constant. Because of the things that we do provide, we're essential in nearly every capacity as far as the things that we do. If the virus went away, would it impact us? Yeah, I believe so. I think there may be a rush to catch up on the things that had been postponed, say for example, vehicle registrations, when the governor said that they were going to forgive vehicle registrations for a period of, I think it was three months. Well, we don't see those people coming through the door or making those requests online. You will. Those things will catch up. So the same with other services that we do. While we may see a decline in interaction face-to-face, I think we're still seeing those same volume of needs being served by our citizens. If things change dramatically and this all went away overnight, I don't know that they turn off the programs that we currently have available to us. I think those dates are necessary in case there's a resurgence of the virus. And I, there's enough unknown yet about that and how it's going to pattern across the country that I think what we're doing now is prudent, and I think those things will continue. I don't know. I don't really have anything else to add to that, I guess.
My only concern would be as Gary said a couple meetings ago, we're gonna get through the virus, but we don't know what's coming down the road from an economic standpoint. That's gonna be another, oh, another issue.
Yes, sir. I agree. I wanted to add some things to what the State's Attorney had shared, and I want to thank him for the things that his department and his office has done. They've been on the forefront of trying every new potential to ensure that their team was able to work. So from remote work processes, from unusual schedules, how they've been flowing their people into the office and then trying to maintain distances with people by having them come to the office and/or work at home at different times of the day to minimize the total number of people that have been there. It's been really amazing to see how they were able to jump on that right out of the gate and make those things all work. And as I mentioned earlier, they've been really great partners on the processes that we're putting in place and some of the other things that we're reviewing and considering, so.
Thanks, Gary.
Madam Chair, just a clarification, John. And I'm gonna look at Janet on this to make sure I got this right. I don't think the license tags were delayed for 90 days. I think they gave them a 30-day extension. Is that what it was for?
Good afternoon, Janet Sailor-Treasure. They extended only the March renewals that expired on March 31st until the 1st of May. That's the only extension that they have given. And people are still licensing, people are still buying new cars, and people are still paying their taxes.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. One more question.
Janet.
Follow-up with John. Thanks, Janet. Appreciate that. John, relative to the, when you talked about an employee that's furloughed and they qualify for state unemployment?
Yes, sir.
And that automatically qualifies them then for the CARES Act? Is the CARES Act also administered by the state in that situation then?
The state is the one that's distributing the money from everything I've read. So the application process is, there's two pieces to it. They have to actually apply. There's a letter actually in here, or the memorandum that Tracy and the State's Attorney's Office put together. Most of the details about the process of applying the benefits that are available, et cetera, are all included in that letter, and that will go to every employee that actually would see the furlough. There are some hoops to jump through, if you will, but they're minimal compared to a normal situation. Right now, they've eliminated the waiting period. Normally, there's at least a one-week waiting period before they're eligible for benefits. They've removed that. They've also made everybody eligible for unemployment that is impacted by COVID-19 according to the federal guidelines. It's been really great to see from an employee relations perspective, the fact that we have these benefits available. And I wanted to echo comments from Commissioner LaCroix. This isn't something that we take lightly. We value with the employees here in the county. We do everything we can to help make sure that they're made whole. And as Commissioner DeSanto mentioned earlier as well, the mental health is a big issue. If you furlough someone 100%, they have this thought, well, what have I had done wrong? Why do I deserve this? How was that decision made? And those are things that will help work through. These partial furloughs, especially in the way they're being conducted where there's discussions within the department, those are a best-case scenario. Because you're helping everybody understand the reasons for them, you're helping them understand how the decisions are being made, and you're providing all the data that they need to actually go through the steps to qualify for these other programs with the understanding that they will be returning to work. So overall, again, it's been amazing to see how these things have all come together.
Thank you, Janet.
Thank you. We need a motion on the, accept the recommendation on the furlough policy?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by DeSanto, second by Roskinet. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
I had a question for Janet.
For who?
Janet.
Janet.
Janet, we're getting a lot of calls, all of us, I think, about deferment of property taxes. Could you please explain so that the public knows we can't defer property taxes? It's a legislative action that would mandate that.
That's correct. State law says that all taxes are due and payable on the 1st day of January. They are separated out into two payments, April and October. All interest and penalty must be collected. The county treasurer nor the county commissioners have the authority to forgive interest or penalties or change a date for taxes that are due. It has to go to the state legislature. And I know a lot of people are saying people aren't paying their taxes. That's not true. We have tons of taxes coming in and we have a lot of people that are paying their taxes in full for the full year.
Are you ahead by a lot, or you won't?
We can't tell you exactly that because we're still waiting for some of the banks to come in. But as of the 1st of May, we can give you a total of where we are this year and where we were last year because we have those figures from prior. And if the commission would like that, we can do that.
And we are ahead so far this year compared to last year?
We were in March. That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Janet. And I would like to give kudos to those who are forward enough thinking to understand that they may be short in October and they're paying their taxes now to get ahead of it so that when October rolls around and they don't have the money, because this unemployment situation has caught up to them, that they don't wind up going, having a lien against them for their taxes. I think that's incredibly smart. And again, I give our citizens of Pennington County and Western South Dakota a lot of kudos for being able to think on their feet and do the right thing.
Thank you. What happens, excuse me, Ron, what happens if they pay the first half and not the second? They're just paying penalties up till the next year, or how does that work if they don't pay the second half?
If they pay the first half and don't pay the second half, they only pay interest on the second half of the taxes.
Okay, until they...
Until they're paid.
Paid.
Paid. That's correct.
Thank you.
Janet, I'm not sure, I've never done this, but can you use credit cards to pay your taxes?
Yes, you can. But we've recommended anyone paying their taxes online, they should pay by e-check. It costs $1.95 to pay by e-check. It's 2.49% to pay by credit card, and that fee is not Pennington County's money. It goes to the credit card company. So anyone paying online should pay by e-check. It's $1.95.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thanks, Janet.
Thanks, Janet.
Thank you, Janet. Next is the, accept the recommendation on the remote work policy. John?
Yes, Madam Chair. So, final topic for today is the remote work policy. We've worked very closely, again, with the State's Attorney's Office. We've worked with an attorney resource in Sioux Falls as well to actually develop this program. What this does is standardizes the remote work process throughout the county. Excuse me. It brings clarification to the program, the things that are being offered, the work schedules. And again, it makes it in a format that allows both parties to understand what's being agreed to and what each one is responsible for in that agreement.
Okay. Any questions?
Move for approval.
Move to approve is by LaCroix.
Second.
Second by Drews. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroix.
I just wanted to get the motion on the floor. I think this is a good move, and it's unfortunate that it took the COVID to get us to move forward, to see how this works for our county and quite frankly, for the community. I think quite a few people are finding out that they can work from home and still get that done. And it's, I appreciate that we needed the structure and the paper to outline it and so forth, but I think in the months to come, we're gonna see some great work that come from it and some better ideas and maybe how things, how we can do our jobs better, not only in the county but throughout the community.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Madam Chair, I don't see Lori in here, but do we know how many we have remotely working at this point in time, Holly?
I...
Or John maybe knows?
It was 84, the most recent report I had. We have about 150 employees that are able to do so. And they do intermittently, again, thanks to how the departments have done this, but Lori has made that possible through her office. Without that IT connection and the technology and the hardware, that'd be very difficult. But those, again, about 150 employees right now can do so.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, John, and I'd like to thank John, of course, and then Gary Drews, Jay and Tracy from State's Attorney's Office, who are working with John to find some solution in all the three of these policies. So we got, hopefully, got it somewhat right. At this point, they've been working hard and there's always gonna be changes every other day, so we just appreciate that we got a starting point. Thank you very much. Next, we have, let's go ahead, do Lloyd, the fire service.
Madam Chair, I think it needs a little explanation before I make a motion, but during our work session, we discussed about the fire service and consensus was reached that we felt that the fire service, you know, is a life and safety situation and public safety and the essential on it. And so I'd make a motion to exclude the 10% reduction to the fire service.
Motion by LaCroix and second by Drews. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Let's see, and then we have an update from the governor. We had a meeting Wednesday, which would be about over half the counties again. I did send the video, audio to the commissioners. So I don't know if y'all listened to that, but some of that Dustin had just talked about, basically the treatment or the experimental treatments for COVID through, the governor had got the idea from, I think it was one of the, I don't know if it was the governor, I can't remember from North Dakota, but it was someone from North Dakota, I apologize, and then decided to do it here. We also talked with them about what they were doing in the fall with the students. And she said she talked to the Board of Regents and they're waiting for the governor's models to decide what they're doing in the fall with the students. Also talked, Jim Schmidt from Lincoln County asked about the hog producers and if there's gonna be some relief there. They are giving, I think, a $2.3 million, I can't remember, it was, okay, I apologize, I didn't write everything down, but bottom line is Smithville is about 5% of the hog-producing company in the United States. And at this time, Smithville was saying three weeks they'd be closed, and the governor was thinking more like two weeks. There was focus last night, focus South Dakota, and they had all kinds of people in the hog industry, between veterinarians and USDA and other people talking about the hog industry and how much it was really affected because there isn't anywhere for people to take their hogs at this time. Also that, in about a month or so, they were gonna start bringing, the hog producers were supposed to start bringing the little piglets in now and starting the process all over, but they had nowhere to take their hogs at this time. So there was gonna be some issues in that area. Dusty's trying to see if he can find some solutions, but they're also working with all kinds of companies throughout the United States to figure out what they can do. We talked about, again, the CARE-19 app, dollars from stimulus. At this time, Dusty's trying to work, he thinks about six, about six weeks or so if, to see if government could actually get any money at that time, meaning for some of the revenues that they were being lost throughout South Dakota. Let's see. Think that's pretty much, most of it's been in the news already that we talked about, but Gary, did I miss anything in there, or Holly?
Not that I know.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay. And the other thing we did was we had a cities meeting, Pennington County cities, throughout Pennington County again, and we had Gary and Alexis talk about the new things that were happening at Monument Health, which again, have probably changed since in about a week, but they were pretty appreciative of that. We talked about basically the governor's report, and we also talked about resources that we had. We didn't have money, but we had a lot of really good department heads that are ahead of the game on a lot of their stuff that they're doing with COVID and their employees that they could visit with. I did volunteer the department heads for help, but you already do that already, and I've noticed a lot of our department heads work with the other counties already, let alone the cities around South Dakota. So they were very appreciative of that as well, so. Holly and Gary have been at most of these meetings we have. I think we're getting 30 to 40-hour work weeks, just us three, well, I should say Holly's first, 60 or 80, I should say that. But again, just going to meetings and keeping updated with every other day changes, so I appreciate both of them, as well as Joan, taking the time out to print and do everything we do here, so. Any other questions or discussion? Motion to adjourn.
Let's, on the next page is the...
Oh, apologize, I always forget.
Next special meeting, Madam Chair, just a comment. I know that we've taken the legal procedures to hold these meetings, not sure that they will be necessary when it comes down to it, because we have a regular meeting next Tuesday, so I don't know if we'll have a need for a meeting on Friday, but how late? What do we have to do in order to cancel one? Can we just cancel it the day before, or...
I can send out notice 24 hours before, yes.
Okay, okay. I think we should keep it on the schedule, but...
Yes, sir.
Same time, keep in mind that we may not need some special meetings.
So at this time, board, we have Friday, April 24th, and Friday, May 1st, both at 9:00 a.m. on their schedule. If those are canceled, we will give you a heads-up way ahead of time.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroix.
I agree with Gary. I was just thinking the same thing. I was thinking we got our meeting, well, today, and then Tuesday, and then another one Friday. I would just put it in the hands of leadership by Thursday to let us know if it's necessary for the Friday, 24th, one.
Okay. Thank you, Lloyd. And I think it's worthy to mention that we appreciate all the department heads and the 10% cut that we got from everybody. So again, you're making a difference for us and we couldn't do it without you. So we appreciate you and all your employees during this time that, again, there's a lot of stress going on, and we just appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Drews.
Second.
Second by Roskinet. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.